Hello, 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 hello everyone, good evening. Um, if you can hear me clearly, please let me know. You know, just say something on the group. Um, whether I'm telling you my WhatsApp. If you can hear me clearly and the music is not louder than my voice, please let me know. Praise God, can we hear me? Praise God, can we hear me? Hello everyone, good evening. If you can hear me, please say something in the, um, in the group so that I know that.
I can hear you, I can hear you.
Thank you, sorry, um. Thank you. Okay, good evening everyone, um, please if at any point you cannot hear me, um, if Neltz wants to try and be funny, please let me know, you know, so that I don't even be able to adjust. Um. Okay, so this is not a preaching meeting, you know, I know that we're already starting to get comfortable with hearing my voice. Um, and we just, you know, do that for the next one hour and then we're out of this call. But that's not how this is gonna happen tonight, so, um. I want us to, to pray for a couple of minutes before we, you know, read the portion that we will be reading tonight and, um, discuss. I want us to pray, I want us to pray. Um, there's a scripture that says, you know, the, the letter keeth. Um, the, the reason why the people, the reason why the Israelites did not understand the coming of the Messiah, the reason why they did not exactly accept Jesus is because they were reading the letters. Because if they had read the scriptures properly and understood it, if they had any form of understanding at all, they would know that, you know, Jesus was the Messiah that was promised, so there is, there is every chance that people read their Bible and do not understand what they are reading, there's every chance that people, um, read a lot, you know, but, um, it doesn't trans, it doesn't translate to change in their lives. So we'll be praying that the Lord will expand his word in our hearts and give us understanding. As the scripture says, you know, the, um, the entrance of the word brings light and understanding to the simple, the, like the entrance of his word will bring light and understanding to our hearts. And we will not just read the letters, we would understand the spirit, we understand the intent behind the inspiration, you know, um, that is this, the portion of scripture that we're reading tonight. And the Lord will breathe, will cause those words to breathe life into our spirit. And it will become a part of us, it will become a part of us in the name of Jesus. Lord, we ask in this moment, we ask, oh God, we know that you are here in our midst, we know that you are right here, right here in our midst, and we know that it is so, it brings you pleasure for us to gather together and read your word and study your word, it is your command, it is your, it is your intention that we, your children gather together like this to study, to study, to study, to study, as scripture says, study thyself, study to show thyself approved unto God. It gives you pleasure for us to sit together and study your word. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity and we ask that you expand this word in our hearts in the name of Jesus, that we will not just read and counting the, the task and, and mark it and go, but it will become life to our spirit. It become life to our spirit, it will pierce our bones and our marrows, it would cut through our joints in the name of Jesus, that it will breathe life to our spirit in the name of Jesus, that indeed, as the scripture, is the life-giving spirit, that it would give our spirits life in the name of Jesus, it will water us in the name of Jesus and make us better children of you in the name of Jesus. Thank you Father, because we have not gathered unto member unto you. Thank you, oh Lord God, because you are right here in our midst. Thank you for the privilege of fellowship, thank you for every single one on this, on this call and people who will watch or listen to the replay. Thank you, because even as we journey with you, starting now, that you will, it would indeed be a journey with you in the name of Jesus. Lord, I ask that you break every barrier, everything that has, that has, um, exalted itself above your knowledge in our hearts. Everything that wants to stand as a hindrance, even our knowledge, even our knowledge of you, if, 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 if that be it, if it be a knowledge of you that stands as a hindrance, oh God. To what you are doing, because sometimes, you know, we, the, what we know about God can limit what we would know about God. But we ask, oh God, that you will break those, those obstacles, you will break those walls down in the name of Jesus and you will reveal yourself to us through the scriptures in the name of Jesus. Thank you heavenly Father, for in Jesus' name we have prayed. For in Jesus' name we have prayed.
Amen.
Amen, amen, because I need to know that we are here and we can hear me, you know, um. I, I know that a lot of people are cold and maybe still on the road, you know, and they can't, they can't use their phones and all of that, but if you are here, please, if, if, even if it means you type in the, um, what's it called, on the group, just so that I know that you can hear me and I'm not talking to sleepy people. Um, okay, so we will be reading the, um, word of God, we'll be reading the scriptures today, I'm really excited, um. Because I've always, I've always wondered what, what is it about the life of David? Um, I mean, of course, we know that Psalms was not written just by David, but he wrote majority of the Psalms, of his half, yeah, like half of the Psalms, um, and all that people contributed to the other half, so that's, that's something to learn, that's something to wonder. Um, before we go into the book of Psalms, let me, let me show you a little bit in the Bible, why we're reading, why we're going to be reading, the way we'll be reading. Um, it is not a new style. Um, can somebody open to the tyranny? I think it's eight, no, I think it's six. Uh, yeah, tyranny is six. Um, so I'll quickly read, you know, six, one to, hmm, one to nine. Yes, one to nine. Um, so I'm reading N L T. These are the commands, decrees and regulations that the Lord your God commanded me to teach you. You must obey them in the land you are about to enter and occupy. And you and your children and grandchildren must fear the Lord your God as long as you live. If you obey all his decrees and commands, you will enjoy a long life. Listen closely, Israel, and be careful to obey, then all will go well with you and you will have many children in the land flowing with milk and honey. Just as the Lord's, just as the Lord, the God of your ancestors promised you. Listen, oh Israel, the Lord is your God, the Lord alone, and you must love the Lord, the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul and all your strength. And you must commit yourselves wholeheartedly to these commands that I am giving you today. Repeat them again and again to your children. Talk about them when you are at home and when you are on the road and when you are going to bed and when you are getting up. Tie them to your hands and wear them on your forehead as reminders. Write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates. You see, you see how the Lord, you know, um, wha, the strategy that the Lord gave them to, to retain the scriptures. As you are waking up, read it, as you are sleeping, read it, if you are talking to your friends, read it. As you are, eh, 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 fisting, read it. In your house, let everywhere in your house, let it be filled with the commands and the decrees of the Lord. And it's interesting, because, you know, it's not just the commandments that the Lord told them to, um, tie around the doorposts, put it on their neck, bind it on their hats, you know, literally eat it. Um, it's not just the commands, say these are the commands, the decree, meaning even the promises of God, the regulations, even the, um, 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 code of conduct, you know, what the Lord gave them on how to live. So basically, everything that the Lord has provided in his word, we are to read them again and again, and not just reading because, you know, okay, let's, let's mark that over to do this. But so that we would always remember, so that we will never forget. And then the portion of scripture that we're going to be reading today, you know, sort of points to that. Um, and if you, if you can volunteer to help us read the translations from the Strong Bibles, please let me see, from the Strong, Strong's Bible. Please, um, just say something on the group so that I know. If you have the Strong's Bible and you can help us with translations. Please let me see your sig- signification. Um, Araulua. Can you hear me? Also, we'll be reading, um, we'll be reading N L T and N K J V, no, we'll be reading N K J V and K J V. Um, I'm thinking. Um. Can Araulua hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, do you have the Strong's Bible?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so, um, when we get to specific, just open, you know, Psalms one, when we get to specific words. I was just asking what that word, what the Strong's Bible, you know, um, translates to the original Hebrew. So one of the reasons why we're using, one of the reasons why we're using, um, um, Strong's Bible is not so that we can learn Hebrew and Greek, even though that may be a byproduct. It is so that we can, um, understand beyond the current translation that we can read now. It's so that we can understand, you know, the original translation. I mean, as we, a- as civilization advances, translation also change, maybe not change, evolves, you know. Um, for example, in, in old medieval, mid- medieval, I don't know what the pronunciation is, but in old times, yeah, these words, one are gonna, you know, you know, it's not, were not used then. So if somebody were to translate the Bible in today's lingua, you can tell that it would be very, very different from, you know, the etat and whereof that we know. Um, and the Bible was not written in English, so the, the the understanding of the translators at that time would also sort of, um, influence the choice of words that they use. So one of the reasons why we're using the Strong's Bible to help us go back to the Hebrew is not just so that we can learn Hebrew, so that we can understand the initial translation of the Hebrew word or the Greek word to what we now know it as. So, um, and also because you know how one word can carry different meanings, both literal and figurative. We're studying the scriptures, context is important, um. And also knowing whether the word that was used or the phrase, whether it is, um, literal or figurative, it is also very important, because somebody can go and say, eh, eh, I can do all things through Christ and think that the all things also means, you know, doing, committing sin. I've heard of interesting cases, um, but yeah, context is important, understanding is important. Um, can we still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so yeah, they are all important. Um, so we would be reading, I need somebody to volunteer to read N K J V. I think we'll use N K J V and I'm not really sure about K J V, sure. Okay, so this Beth, you're saying you can hardly hear me, um, can you hear me better now? Hold on. Um, I'm sorry, please give me a moment to switch these. But while we wait, um. Elizabeth, are you, are you ready to read? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, um. Elizabeth, Psalm one, you can just read one to three, let's start from, let's start from there, one to three. Can Elizabeth hear me?
I hear you, ma.
Okay, let's go. Psalm one, two, three.
One, one, two, three. Blessed is, blessed is the man that walks not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor stands in the path of sinners, nor sits in the seat of the scornful, but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law he meditates day and night. He shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, that brings forth its fruit in its seasons. Whose leaves also shall nor wither, and whatever he does shall prosper.
Thank you, thank you, um, well, okay, so let me, let me quickly read N L T and then we'll take it verse by verse, because this, this, this chapter is so, um, is deeper than what we have understood, and myself inclusive. It is, it is deeper than what we have understood, and if, if any Christian can indeed meditate on chapter one for like a year and just leave it, as in leave, L I B E, leave it out. I feel like world would be a better place, um, and I'm joining with the Lord, uh, work with the Lord would be a better one, you know. Um, so let me go read N L T before we queue in Araulua to help us check some translations in Strong's Bible. Um, so it says, pour the joys of those who do not follow the advice of the wicked or stand around with sinners or join in with mockers, but a delight in the law of the Lord, meditating on it day and night. They are like trees planted along the river bank, bearing fruits each season. Their leaves never wither and they prosper in all they do. Now. There are certain things that I want us to pick out from these three verses, you know. There is a group of people that this Psalm was referring to, there's a particular, a specific group of people. A, uh, what do you call them now? A, um. A sect, you know, a, a, a called out, different, um, spectacular, specific group of people that this Psalm is, was referring to, and it was, it's described, it described them, it described what they do not do in verse one and described what they do in verse two. So in verse one, it's saying, they do not, you know, follow the advice of the wicked, they do not stand around with sinners or join in with mockers. Um, in N K J V, you know, it said, um, um, before I bite my tongue, or rather in, in, in K J V, sorry, not N K J V, blessed is the man. And as he says, all the joy, all the joy, all the joy. K J V says blessed is the man, I'm sure that's what N L T puts it as well. So, um, Araulua, are you ready for us? Let's quickly go to Strong's. Um, and, you know. Flesh it out, verse by, verse by verse. Um, there is a lifestyle that is expected of people who have been, who have been bought by the blood of Jesus, people who are followers of Jesus, people who are, um, called by his name, called according to his name. People are named after him, there is a lifestyle, there is a way that they behave, there is a way that the heavens expect us to behave. There is a, there is a peculiarity with the way that we behave, we cannot see, the, the thing that separates us from the world cannot just be that we go to church. The thing that separates us from the world cannot, cannot just be that, um, we, we bear Sarah or, or David or Abraham, you know, or Solomon or Samson, that cannot just be the difference. It also cannot just be that we speak in tongues and we perform miracles, that cannot be the difference, because guess what? The Israel, the, um, if, if you come as Moses and you put your rod on the floor and it turns to snake, Pharaoh will call out his magician and say, I can do the same thing, okay? So there is a lifestyle that makes us different from the world. And if you, if you, I mean, you should already know by now that there is a difference, there should be a difference, heaven expects, the Lord expects that there is a difference between us, that I've been bought by his blood and the people who are not, basically. So, because I mean, if you read this chapter and you, and you start from verse four, which we'll not be going into today, you will see where it says, but the ungodly are not so, meaning that the man that walks not in the counsel of the ungodly and stands not in the way of sinners and sits not in the seat of the scornful is a godly man, but he didn't even start like that. Okay, this Psalm did not say, oh, there's a man called the godly man, he doesn't do A, B, C and D. It is what he does that makes him a godly man, do you understand? Because, um, by, um, how did Jesus even say it? Is it by, by, by your fruit, I'd be, by their fruits? I can't remember that verse, and I hope I'm really quoting Jesus and it's not just what people have said. But, um, there is a, there is a fruitfulness, there's a kind of fruit that is expected of us, that we're expected to hear if we are truly sons of God. And that, that verse one did not just start with, there is a godly man, you know, um, and he does A, B, C and D. It says blessed is the man, so the man that does not walk in the counsel of the ungodly, there is something called the counsel of the ungodly. There is something called the way of sinners. See, it's not even saying the man that does not walk with the ungodly, the man that does not stand with sinners, the man that does not sit with the scornful, no, no, no. I want us to really, you know, open our hearts, open our spirit and understand the depths of these verses. So, the counsel of the ungodly, that's number one. The way of sinners, that's number two. The seat of the scornful, that's number three. It is not, because Jesus, Jesus ate with sinners, Jesus, um, in quotes, rode with sinners, he did not sin with them, you know, he did not, um, he, he did not walk in the counsel of the ungodly, he did not stand in the way of sinners, but he walked with them, do you understand? So that tells you that this is not saying, if you have somebody who is a sinner who has not yet made Christ, don't walk with the person. Maybe you and the person needs to go to work together, so, um, ostracize them from your world, that's not what this verse is saying. You know, it's saying that there is a way that the sinners, you know, walk, don't even stand there in that way, don't stand there. There is a seat of the scornful, people who mock, and we have plenty scorners, or yeah, I think that's the word. You know, in this age and time, people who will say, oh, oh, that's what they should do in that church, oh, oh, that's what persons are doing there, collect all your money and go. You cannot afford to sit in that seat. As in, it is, it is on, it is unrighteous to do so, that's what this verse is saying. So before we start to quote verse three and say, I'm like a tree planted by the riverside, eh, 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 there are some things that are peculiar to that tree. There are some things that are peculiar to that godly man. Okay, so verse one, we'll sit there and stay, and stay there until the Lord expands us in our heart. So Araulua, are you ready? Um, let us, let us.
Yes.
Can we see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so, um, there is a part in this definition, what, what, if you open, if you click each, um, number code, you know, for each word, there is a part in the definition that says what the Lord, so forget the translit, translie, transliteration, yes, and pronunciation, forget those words, maybe not forget, but your focus is not there. We're trying to understand the original context of the word, um, blessed. And it says, you know, happiness, only in masculine plural construction as in translation, like, how happy. So blessed does not even mean that, you know, the person is, um, has millions and billions. The blessed in this case now is saying, the person will be full of happiness, you know, somebody that is happy. That's it, that's the constant state of their heart, happy, because why? They do not walk in the counsel of the ungodly. So Ara, when you, um, open the Strong's dictionary and you. May I know if you heard me?
So I didn't go on your screen, didn't talk.
Oh, wow, okay, so I was saying that when we open the Strong's dictionary and we, um, find the definition, what we're looking for is in the definition. So if I say, what is the meaning of blessed? Where you go is the definition, so if you click on the, the word, the number code for each word, then you go to the definition. So your, your response for blessed now would be, um, happiness, how happy, do you understand? Okay, so I see that it's, it's really a struggle to to, um, what's it called? But can we still hear you?
I can.
Okay, so Ara, are you able to access your Bible?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay, so let's go to blessed.
So the definition is happiness. How happy.
So if you put that in context, in, in, if you put it into the line, blessed is the man, what does that tell us?
How happy is the man?
Thank you, how happy is the man? So of course, um, man here, there is no, there is no, um, uh, what's the word? There's no extra definition, man is, man is man, you know, eh, fellow, eh, you know, human, basically, blessed, how happy is the human being that walk not, or that, that does not walk? Let's use the language of now, that does not walk, what does it mean to walk? What, 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 what was the Bible referring to? Ara, please help us. Ara, can you hear me? Or better, yeah, so that we, okay, okay, go on, so walk, that walk it. What does that mean? What does, what does it mean to walk? Because it's not like there's a, there's a red carpet outside that we leave our house to go and step on every day. So what was this verse referring to?
I've seen a lot of things there, something to walk, made good variety of applications, differently advertising, all along.
Behave.
From on continually, the converse at the path.
So if you, if you, if you, I don't know if we can all read, you know, if we're all opening our strengths, I mean, I know Orlu is reading. Um, but I would like for us to all open so that we can see for ourselves, you know, and we're not confused. So, the walk there is both literally and figuratively. Meaning to follow a path, to behave like, you know, to, um. To, to spread, really, to, um, travel. So there is a council of the ungodly. And this term is saying, how happy is the man that does not behave? That doesn't take, that does not take the counsel of the ungodly, we'll learn who the ungodly are very soon. But first of all, this man, this man that has chosen to follow Jesus, this man, this woman. This human being that Christ has died for, that has chosen to, to live his life alive after. You know, the, the order of Christ, saying, how happy, how happy is Orlu? Because she does not walk in the council, she does not behave in the way, she doesn't follow the path of the ungodly. She doesn't start, she doesn't, um, um, join herself, you know, she's not together, you cannot find that in the path, she's not there. She's not there, she, she, you cannot find that in the path of the ungodly. If you are, if you are, if, if the ungodly, they got us together and yeah, giving counsel, you cannot find Orlu, are they? That's what this verse is saying. We would think happiness is in the getting of millions and, um. You know, the very wild and wide things that we desire, some of which are not harmful. But it is time for us to start placing our priorities where they should be. It is time for us to start setting our affection indeed on things above, and this is how. This is how, this is, this is, this is what we're doing, actually, this is how to set your affection on things above. This is how, this is how, this is how. So he said, oh, how happy is the man that does not behave? That does not take the counsel of the ungodly, that does not behave in the council, that doesn't, that doesn't act like somebody that the devil has given wisdom. You know, and takes it and, and acts it, how happy? Meaning that there's a point that we start to experience unhappiness, I mean, not sadness regarding situations, but you know, just general, I'm just sad. For no reason, because people can do things to you that can make you sad. But like, just a general unhappiness with life, and you need to start checking, you've been taking the counsel of the ungodly. You've been taking the counsel of the ungodly. Because there is a hap, there is a kind of happiness that comes, eh, to the people who do not walk in the council. It is not enough to hear the council, in this case, they, they hear it and they do it. According to the, you know, definition that we have checked, they behave like, they follow the pattern. Of the ungodly. Do we really need to go to church? Is love not love? You know, if God is good, why, why, why do people die? You know, um, 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 my body, my choice, you know, no, you cherish my opinion, like whatever you say now. They are councils of the ungodly, in fact, some of them are not even, they're not even, um, um. They, they, they don't seem bad, they don't look bad, they don't sound bad, but they are the council of the ungodly. In fact, even as twisted as, you know, um, when it comes to marriage. Uh, um, um, the scripture says, the man is the head of the woman. And so men will go ahead and think that because they are men, every, every other woman is under them, it's also a council of the ungodly. Or, you know, thinking, saying, um, um, submission is slavery, it's a council of the ungodly, because the Bible did not say it. So there are so many councils that are currently, you know, popular, but they are council of, the councils of the ungodly. And if we follow that pattern, we cannot be happy. And this is not just a tingling feeling in your belly, that's not the kind of happiness talking about, because when we read further, you will see. So let's see what councils says, um, actually, I want other people to also read, if you, if you get their face, you can quickly just read so that we can. Make progress, I feel like we'll stay on this, on this verse very well, sure. Um, so we have, you know, we have read what blessed is, we've read what walk is, what, what it means to walk in this case. You know, to follow a pattern, to behave like, now what is the council?
Okay, so counsel, advice. By application plan, also to the purpose.
Thank you. So how happy is the man that does not follow in the path? You know, that does not follow in the advice, that does not follow in the purpose. Are you seeing now that is beyond somebody just telling you something and then you going ahead with it? There's also a purpose, you know. Blessed is the man, or how happy is the man who doesn't follow in that purpose, who doesn't pattern his life? Utter that purpose. This is a, is a, is supposed to be a self-assessment moment for, for all of us. What am I patterning my life after? Who have I made my role model in quotes? Some of our, some of the people that have made their role models, they're not even bad people like that, but they are not godly people. Let me not start to call names, you know. Oh, this particular person, influence I did A, B, C, and D, so that's what I want to do now, I think it's nice, it's a council of the ungodly. It's a purpose of the ungodly. See, first of all, anything that doesn't, um, stick out to, to, um, um. To make Christ known, to further his kingdom, is ungodly. That's the truth. If you weigh it in the scheme of things, and the end result of this thing will not make, will not have something to do with Christ, he's ungodly. So it's not just somebody telling you something and you refusing to do it, that's not just what, that's not what it means to, to not walk in the council of the ungodly. You know, there is also a purpose of the ungodly. There's a plan, is it that they're not joking, they have so much in their store. It's not just, oh, um, let me advise you, and then you advise wrongly, that's, that's not just what, there's also a plan. You'll be shocked how much, if you, I mean, if you, if you go and read about, um, the L G B T Q movement. You'll be shocked at how much time has, had gone into planning. It did not start in twenty twenty, it did not start in twenty fifteen, in fact, it didn't start in two thousand. That's like, how long, they, so everything that they do now, every new thing that comes up, it's not new, they, they have a plan. They have a plan. This time, four, five years ago, you know, when, when, when the agenda was gaining grounds. The plan was not just that they leg, legalized, that was the word, man and man, woman and woman, it is way beyond that. It is putting control in the hands of man. It is turning what God has put perfect order in and bringing chaos into it. It's beyond man and man, woman and woman. It is a, it is a world where you can now justify evil by saying it is how I feel. Can you see how foolish that is? But guess what? They have a plan, there is a purpose. And unless we actually learn to pattern our lives after the purpose of God. We will see everything that is cute and nice and think, ah, this is the next thing now, this is what is trending now and we'll follow it. And wonder why we're not happy people. And we wonder why we're not happy people. So happy is the man that does not pattern his life. In the plan and purpose of the ungodly, what does ungodly mean? Who wants to quickly check for us? Can we see him?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, do you want to help us check the meaning of ungodly?
Okay, I'm morally wrong.
Morally wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there's, there's an extra, there's an extra day that I was going, that I was looking for.
Concretely, and, I, I don't know if it's and, or, and, I don't know what and is, concretely actively bad. Yeah, then there's a condemned guilty wicked man that did wrong.
Thank you, thank you. So, first of all, it would be great to use the opportunity to, um, re, re, what's the word? Reiterate, um, that as human beings, we cannot define morals for ourselves. We cannot, we cannot suddenly say, oh, we know good or bad, um, or good or evil, I say, okay, don't steal, don't kill, you know. Um, killing is bad, I mean, like, why would you, why would you take somebody's life? That cannot be a reason why you think something is morally good or bad. Um, it also cannot be, I, I, I don't, I don't think this is, I do, I mean, if I'm not hurting anybody, then I'm good. That's not the, but the scale, you know, for, for measuring what is morally good or bad. God is sovereign, God is our sovereign, um, what's the word now? God is the one that gives us, is our point of reference. So if we are thinking of morals, we are also thinking of a point of reference, we're thinking of, um. Um, somebody who started it, somebody who can be the balance between the good and the evil. Somebody who can dish out, you know, the rules in quotes. So if we think of morale as something that is, that we can agree with as good or bad. We've not started. So if you, if, I mean, if you go back to the laws of countries now, the current laws of people's countries, different countries. Um, and you go to the commandments, you will see that there is a whole lot of, um. Eh, resemblance, forget the English and the semantics. If you go to murder, first, first degree, second degree, you know, all of those things. If you read the book of the tyranny, you will see that there is resemblance. So the, the laws of nations initially were formed from this, you know, commandment. So whether or not people like it, whether or not it is like it, it was God that gave the laws to start with. You know, it was God that gave us the laws, because he is the point of moral reference, whether we like it or not. You know, um, you cannot, you cannot, if you remove, um, um, law. I, I know that we're branching a bit, but it's necessary, if you remove laws from, from a country and everybody's fit to do what they, what they like. What, what do you think that country would look like? What do you think that society would look like? It would be chaotic, because I can just think of persons annoying me, I'm gonna kill you, and that's the end, there's no, there's no, um. Who wants to watch? There's no repercussion, you know, nothing. I'm not happy with this person, I have the means, I kill you, that's the end. I see something of, of yours that I like, I don't, I cannot afford it, or I, I don't have it in my compound. I come to you, I take it, you can't do anything about it, if you do, I kill you. As in, we would, it would be such a chaotic world, and I'm sure, I, 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 I want to believe that that's what, you know, the world looked like when, um. In, in creation, I view other in Genesis, when, you know, we're saying the earth was without form or void. And the spirit of God over the pond, the face of the deep and all of that, I, I feel like it was that kind of chaotic, it was, it has darkness, because. Ha, where do I run to? Who do I call upon? Do you get? So, even morals, even mor- morally wrong or morally right, is reference to God. Because we by ourselves cannot be morally right or wrong, you know, um, so yes. Um, um, ungodly, you know, morally wrong, actively bad. You know, condemned, guilty, wicked, like, just think of all the terrible, terrible, terrible things to describe somebody with. And it's not just somebody. You know, it's not just a person, as in, um, um, what's the word? The ungodly is not just, because there's a council attached to it. Um, the council of the ungodly, so it's not just, the, 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 this story is not just about the ungodly man. Because the idea of God for the ungodly man is for him to be saved. So this story is not just about the man himself, it's about the ways of that man. She gets, it's about the ways of that man. So happy is the man that does not pattern his life. After the purpose and the plans of the wicked man, are you seeing? And the things that we don't think are wickedness, are wickedness. You know, eh, pro-choice is wickedness, it is wickedness. Because how do you kill, kill a, 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 a child that God has already had plans for? Is wickedness. Eh, um, um, the states and countries that are now. Taking away the powers of parents to, to nurture their children. And everything is now done in schools and from the government, is wickedness. It's an ungodly act. Because the reason why the Lord gave the children to the parents as custodians. Is so that they can nurture them, so that they can bring them up, so if somebody takes away that power, it's not wickedness. You know. So the, the ungodly is not necessarily, I mean, it is that, but even beyond, even beyond the things that we can see with surface eyes. The, um, um, lying, killing, stealing, you know, connotation, adultery, the very, the. The majorities that we can see, there are also some in-depth wickedness. You know, they, they let you into public office and you chop all the money. And say, when is your turn to do this thing? It's wickedness. It is wickedness. Or you are willing to sacrifice the future of your, of your generation. Just so that you can secure a place with the king of this world, is wickedness. And the scripture is saying, happy is the man, happy is that person. See, the person that has, that has decided to not walk, to not pattern their lives after the purpose, as in. They decided that, you see this world, eh, I have just come to follow the Lord. I'm not going to walk, I'm not going to pattern my life, I'm not going to behave in the way of the wicked people. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a kind of happiness that they've already packaged for that man. Because AKA, Koroine, he not send you, you know, in a holy way, he don't really send you. Happy is the man that does not pattern his, his life after. The plan and purpose of the wicked man, of the ungodly. Of the, um, of the condemned, you know, that, that's also part of the interpretation, of the condemned. Happy is that man. And sometimes not knowing what the ways of this, of the ungodly is, uh, uh, the council of, rather council, because we're still in council. Not knowing what the council of the ungodly is, would also not help us know how to walk. Because we would think everything is, everything that is good is good, and that's not the truth. The sermon is what will help you know, this thing may be good, it may look nice to the eyes, but it's on the plan of God, and then you just, you withdraw. Like, no, 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 I'm not going to walk in the council of the ungodly. I was listening to a podcast recently, I don't know, I don't know what gave me the effrontery, you know, what made me think that. I can do that, like, get away with it, because I, I ended up leaving the podcast, he's seen and, and almost cursing and all of that. I'm sure we must have come across it one way or another, if you have spent of them on Instagram. Um, and, you know, it was about, and if you answer, I was supposed to celebrity. Um, who says, you know, for, in, 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 in a talking stage. Um, she, is the way she behaves men, and they don't ever. Um, she, she, is the way she behaves men, and they're never, for that message. If you're unable to meet up with that payment in codes, um, she just knows that this person is not for me. I mean, like, okay, um, great. And so, wh- what even pushed me to go on what your podcast was? Because I wanted to see, is it a joke? Like, is she, was she joking? But I saw that she maintained that same, um, stance all through the po- podcast. So the point, the point for me was that she gets on saying, you know, uh, because when they ask her. Is it like people have the WhatsApp group where you decide that this is how much a man should pay you for just talking to you? Because there was, there was a point where she said, oh, that, um, um, you pay me because I'm beautiful. And it was, it was foolish, well, I mean, it was silly, like, are you joking? If you're because I'm beautiful, okay. Um, then they now ask her if, you know, like, if there's like a group, like an association that determines how much people pay, how much men pay. And why they should pay or give you money and all of that. And he said, no, no, like, there's, there's no WhatsApp group, but that's just, that's just what every girl wants. And I'm like, oh my god, like, there are people, there are teenagers and young adults that'll be listening to this and think. I want to live my life like this, I want to live my life like this. And they begin to pattern their life after that, that is a council of young godly. There is no God in that thing, that's what it means. There is no God in it. It sounds cute because, I mean, she's living life, you know, she's driving the cars and visiting the places. And wearing the accessories, but there is no God in it. And it is useless in the scheme of things. We may have pleasure for the moment, but guess what? In the market scheme of heaven, it was, it was useless. And that may even be all the way high there, but there are also little, little things that we put our hands and feet into. That in the market scheme of heaven, like, ah, more enekey me the moray yo, bit terror like local lele. Translation, we did not send you to go to this demo. This is not, this is not what we have committed into your hands, this is not what we have asked you to go do. This is not how we have patterned that you will live your life. This council that you are currently partnering your life after is ungodly. And except we learn to discern, except we learn to, you know, um, really understand what the council of the ungodly is best. And now discern it with every decision that we make. We will keep following the crowd and thinking, oh, I mean, um, culture with a mix of Jesus. And that's only letter we've been called to do. So one of these that we're doing on this call, eh, is to first of all reveal our foolishness to ourselves. Because eh, walk, walk onto the man that thinks is standing. That's one of the things which I would do to you, it will reveal, you know, yourself, and you'd be like, oh my god, I have been foolish. But guess what? It is good because it now tells us where to begin to get wisdom from. That's what the scriptures are for, it's to reveal us, to us. If you think you, you've met yourself, you have not. Because you have to be attempted, that you, you are measuring yourself with. If you, if you have, um, uh, what do they call it, what's it now? Goals, KPIs at work, you know, there is a, there is a, there are metrics that you used to measure your performance with. For us as believers, the metrics is not just, okay, I did this, I, I wanted to do this and I, and I did it. That's not the metric. The metric is the word of God. And if we've not attained certain things according to the word of God, we are, we are joking. And would have prayed and, you know, fasted and done all the acrobatics that, you know, should have yielded. But guess what? Because there is a knowledge gap in certain places, we'll keep, we'll keep allowing the devil make mockery of our lives. And I'm excited I was starting to, you know, open up our spirit to the scriptures, so that we can see. See what God's plan for us is, and then see where we are so that we know how to measure up. And it's, this is not something that we can do on our own, this is something that God has called us to do on our own. It is, it is something that he has, he has called us to do with him. So if you're currently self-assessing, and you're thinking, oh my, oh my god, I have a long way to go. Um, good news, you don't have to go through that long way alone. That's what the Holy Spirit is here for. But except he reviews to us what the metrics are. We may not exactly know where we are and how to measure up. So let's, let's, let's try and finish this verse, um. Blessed is the man that worked not in the council of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners. Now, what does it mean to stand? Or are you still here? Don't sleep, don't sleep, don't sleep, don't sleep. Don't sleep. What does it mean to stand? Um, Aurel, why are you here?
So I can, sorry, I'm coming.
Okay, so, um, okay, go on, go on, if you're, if you're there already.
Okay, stand to rise. Um. Abide, accomplish.
Hello? Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, I can, I can hear you.
Okay, so I said to rise. Abide, accomplish. Then the B part, clear, confirm, continue, decree.
Thank you, thank you, to, to stand, to stay, you know. Literally, literally be on your feet up. Um, and then rigoratively to abide, to. Abide means staying, as in dwelling in a place, like where you abide in your house, you, that's where you live. You know, you go from, you go out, you come back, that's where you come back to. You know, um, um, to, to establish, to set. As in, when, 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 um, when they want to build a house, and then they lay the foundation, they set the foundation. Because nothing can shake it, but I'll come and shake that foundation, that's what people. So let's, let's go back to the beginning again. Happy is the man that does not pattern his life. After the plans and purpose of the wicked man. Or abide, or dwell, dwell in the way of sinners. So, to be happy in this life, it's not to guess the next thing on your goals list, whatever it calls things. And that's why we'll keep thinking, we'll keep, you know, getting into relation. I don't know what's wrong with Telegram, I think maybe tomorrow we use them, because I can't keep doing this. It's always the last thing you had, so that I know where to pick up from.
Are you talking about stand?
Wow, oh my goodness. It is well, I have said a lot of things, okay, so I'll say that, um. Did you hear the part about, you know, um, not being whole and entering a relationship, did you hear that part?
Nope.
Wow, good gracious god. Okay, so I'm saying that, you know, um, sometimes we think that happiness will come from. Getting into a, a new relationship or whether platonic or romantic. We think that happiness will come from, you know, um, there is this new person that my friend is talking to. And I'm just going to get their, the number, follow them on Instagram, stop them, message them, and become their friend by fire by post. And then, um, when that happens, they will bring me joy. Or I will get into a relationship with the opposite sex. I mean, now, I've, I've been thinking for a while, something's gonna get into a relationship, once I have my husband, oh lord. We are going to live such a happy life, guess what? You are not yet happy according to the scriptures, except you begin to not walk. So you understand the council of the ungodly, you run away from it. You understand the, the, you, you recognize rather the way of sinners, you run away from it. You identify the seat of this kung fu and you make sure that your bum bum doesn't touch it. I want you to just picture it, visualize it, you know, um. Let's, let's make it, let's try to make it literal, you go out of your house. This can rigoratively represents, you know, the things that we do day to day, the interactions that we have with people, the decisions that we make. So you've got to be house, on your way, you know, there is road A, there is road B. Road A is the council of the ungodly, road B is the godly council. This scripture is saying, a blessed man, a happy man is the man that goes through road B. Because road A may look like it's smooth, the roads are tanned, you know, straight, your car will not, you know. Eh, the chuckers of your tie, of your car will not break or spoil. Um, mud will not splash, be splashed on your body. But road B is walking progress, you know, like the roads that we have in this country. Um, and you'd rather say, no, 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 the way of, the, the council of the ungodly eh, on road A. They look like quick, get rich quick skin. They look like, if I do it now, I'm gonna make it now, you know, it's the fastest way to rise, it's what's trending now, that's what people do now. But I know that it is council of the ungodly, so what, I will go through road B. And I would rather go through that long, on interesting, muddy road. Because that's where, that's where the council of the godly is, I'm going to be a happy man. When I'm, as I'm going, there's a way that the sinners, they line up, you know, you know how people, um, um, um. Line up at garages, you know, to, to load. When you're going, oba, 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 and then after, after one, the paper or bus leaves, the next person continues. There is a way of, of, of sinners. I will not follow that path. I will keep going through the way of, you know, the saved. Then I will not, when I see the seat of this kung fu, it may be, it may be, it may be seats that are, that is around a table where. So what, what came to mind now was Daniel, you know, um, in the palace. He had all the access to, eh, see, the truth is, we think that Daniel was showing off when he said he wasn't going to be file himself in the king's meet. I mean, eventually there was a show-off that happened, but that was not his intention. Because guess what? He understood whose, I mean, yes, whose he is. As the person that own him, eh, he understood that the life that I have been called to live. I cannot, the meat of the king is, is nothing compared to where me I'm coming from and where I'm going to. There are destinies and nations attached to my consecration, I cannot afford. To spend that many days, ten days, you know, eating meats. With, with gold plates and drinking the, the finest of wines. From glass cups, which I think would be very expensive in those days, you know. Because I think what I use is stainless, but that's not the point. I'm not going to afford myself that, that pleasure, it would, would have been huge. I mean, Daniel, he was an ordinary Hebrew man, and now they're bringing you to come and dine with kings. But he knew that all of them, it's just corners. And these coffers, I hope that's, it's corners, that award, someone German take before I, you know, um, Daniel, please, don't let that happen to me. But, but Daniel understood, and he made a decision in his mind, I'm not gonna sit on these seats. I'm not going to dine with these people, I'm not going to feast on this food. And again, it wasn't necessarily about the people themselves, what about the way of life, the culture? Oh, a manibo man, in our, in our culture, we don't, we don't, what, what's this? We don't, we don't, we don't do that here. Hey! See the person that cried, that cries, died for. Or in my place, we don't, we don't, we don't wash dishes, we don't sweep the floor, you know, the women are below us. Wow, seat of this kung fu, it's a, it's a way of life, it's a pattern. Doesn't mean that it's one sitting, it don't matter markets that, you know, they put kung fu there, places to go down, come and take to buy it, no. People that, 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 that have started mocking fathers' office. People that will open accounts just to, you know, bring somebody down, cancel culture. I mean, these things are very, they are very around more now more than ever. The sermon will help you know, recognize, they say, what, what's this one singing? My daddy, my daddy, my daddy, my daddy, what's that? Excuse me, is God not my daddy? And then they would dedicate their time, that they should be able to go and find out to make money or better their life. To be scounding those people, to be mocking them. Or when a man of God, or a fellow Christian, let's even leave men of God, a fellow brother or sister falls. That's when I want to open your teeth and say, eh, you know, I knew it, I just knew it, I knew it. I was only, 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 I knew that nobody was holy, really? That is seat of this kung fu. That is the seat of this kung fu. And this is an assessment period for us, you know. If, if, it, it is the time for us to begin to say, Holy Spirit, I cannot live this life that you have called me to live on my own. And so I'm submitting myself to you, body, soul and spirit. Review to me the things that I'm doing in foolishness, that I'm patterning, you know, the, the, the things that I'm doing that is looking like I'm patterning my life after the ungodly. Because there is no happiness there. There is no happiness there. Hopefully by tomorrow, we can go into verse two. We're going to verse two and, um, or, 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 or maybe finish the chapter, hopefully, um. But I hope that, you know, as, as we leave the call tonight, there will be a, there will be a conversation that will start. Between us and the Holy Spirit, because we cannot keep living life on autopilot, we cannot keep going with the flow and acting as if these things are not. They are not real, they are not true. We will be robbing ourselves. We cannot keep, I mean, David will pray again and again and say, search my hearts. Because sometimes we think, this is what I do every day, this is how I live my life, and then just keep going, going, going. And not be saying, um, there are some things that you have not opened your eyes to see that is stopping you from knowing me more and doing what I've called you to do. But you not even hear it because there is a routine, once again, and then you are just following after that. Or you even hear teachings and read books, you know, and listen to sermons. Well-inten- intended, I mean, well-intention, good intention, not help me. Well-intended sermons, but because we, we want to pattern our lives after. Let me use this person, Apostle Joshua Selman. So he says, pray five times a day or pray at specific times in the midnight. Those things are meant to be aids, they're meant to be help, you know, tools to help us to ascend. But then you have not decided that, if you have, after, anything after twelve, I'm not a, I'm not a prayer again, and God is saying. Maybe he wants to, he wants to tell you at specific afternoons, um, how about you just spend thirty, forty-five minutes with me, there's something I want to tell you. But because you have decided that, no, if I'm not praying in midnight, the Lord is not hearing me, you would have robbed yourself. You are in a, because the Lord is going to ex- eh, I say exhaust, I mean exhaust, but that's just something that only God should do to himself. The Lord is going to, um, um, lift us up, you know, and, and really just put us in strategic places where we can make decisions. On behalf of nations. You can't get there and they are saying that, um, there is a policy that they want to bring out. And you know that it would affect the people of God, let's even leave you for God, you know, it will affect the country mass. But no, if you, you don't want to stand alone, or you don't want to be the odd one else, or you don't want to, you can't, see, you cannot, you cannot. But no, if you, you don't want to stand alone, or you don't want to be the odd one else, or you don't want to, you can't see, you cannot, you cannot. Do much with that kind of mindset. He has to bring your lions. I will still not bow. And we think these things are, you know, when I get there, when I get there, in the little things, in the little things. Where they are talking somebody down, you say, no, I will not be a part of this. If you're not going to have conversation with this person. Who actually is going to help you to, you know, navigate her into this person, I will not, I will not, it will not be from my mouth, but they would hear that. Um, this person is a bad person, or this person is, is, is not worthy of certain things. I will not, I will not be, I will not be in a party where, you know, they're about to do somebody good, and just because of what the person has done for me. I will now say, no, I reject it. Let me, let me take my revenge. It will not, it will not be said of us. That the people that God is interesting nations and destinies into, into, into their hands. This is how they believe in their lives. It will, it will not be a part of us. It will not be said of us. That where they are talking about churches. Where, where, where they are talking about pastors and tithes and offerings and all those things that, that, that the people of the world have now, you know, bastardized. Will now be found in that gathering. It will not be said of us. We will be devoted to the Lord in deed, as in in our deeds, in the things that we do. We will be devoted to the Lord and to his kingdom. This is how we live happy lives. This is how we live happy lives. Thing. But his delight is in the law of the Lord. Because the law, he, the law of the Lord is holy, he's righteous, he's beautiful. It is that same law, as in the, the laws of the Lord, and it's not just, you know, it goes beyond, um, um, don't kill, don't steal, I mean, those things are the basics. That, that's the point. The law of the Lord is the entire scripture, the entire, the, the pattern, the pattern, the culture of the Lord. The way that the Lord has called us to live, that's the law. And that shall love the love that God, you know, with all that, with all your heart or your might or your strength. Only him shall you serve. And that shall love your neighbor according, I mean, love your neighbor as yourself. Jesus said it, after these two things, there is no greater, there is no law, there is no law against it, there is no law against you loving your neighbor like yourself. There's no law against you loving the Lord your God with everything that you have and are. That's the law of the Lord. But if you don't even know the Lord, how do you want to love him? Do you understand? So the whole scripture is the law of the Lord. See, people say, I will meditate, as in, it brings me joy to just be thinking about the law of the Lord, as in, it brings me joy. And so I say, I was glad when they said to me, let us go to the house of the Lord, because David knows that there is joy there. And the Lord is that spirit, for when the spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty. Ah, and at his right hand, there are pleasures forevermore. See, the things that we have, they were, were finding pleasures in. May the Lord just read us of those things. Read our hearts of those things, read our desires of those things. I will indeed delight in the law of the Lord, meditate day and night, observe to do accordingly. That's how we can live prosperous lives. I want us to just spend, you know, next, excuse me, um, two, three minutes, just saying. Dear Lord, I, I, I surrender my heart to you. I surrender my will to you, I surrender my wish to you. Help me to pattern my life after your law. Help me to pattern my life after your culture. Help me to pattern my life after your way. Let me find delight in your law. Let me find delight in your will. Let me find delight in your way. Let there not be any day that I will set the desires of this world above your desires in my heart. Lord, search my heart, search my heart, search my heart. Sometimes we think that we are godly people, we think that we are. We are, you know, we are working in the will of God because we fast and we pray. It goes beyond all those things. There are things that we have boy in our hearts, yeah. There are things that we meditate on unknowingly, just, we just pick it up somewhere and begin to brood over it and begin to, you know. Fashion our life after it, because somebody said, somebody that we admire, somebody that we adore, somebody that we have looked up to. Settle in things, and so that's how we want to start to live our lives. Begin to ask that the Lord will read you of those things. That the Lord will read you of those things, that he will reveal to you the dark corners of your heart. The dark corners of your heart. The, because you cannot live this godly life without God. It is, it is, as in, it is foolishness at, eh, from start. You cannot live a godly life without God. There is no point. There is no point. There is no point. And so sometimes there are certain things that will start to happen, there are certain things that will start to question, you know, uh, um, 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 your, your, your stance. There's certain things that will start to, that will start to, to, to present themselves as, as though they were of God. But the sacraments and your surrendering to, to the Lord in this moment will help you to know that, hey, 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 get up, the Lord is not here. This is the way of sinners. This is the seat of this kung fu, this is the, this is the council of the ungodly, I will not take it. And that this would be our, our testimony, in truth, indeed, in truth, indeed. That will be those who have patterned their lives after the Lord, after the Lord, after the laws of the Lord. That it would bring us joy to meditate on the laws of the Lord day and night, day and night, day and night. It will bring us so much pleasure, so much pleasure to just dwell with the Lord. To dwell with the Lord, to dwell with the Lord, to dwell with the Lord. Begin to ask that the Holy Spirit will help you to set your affection on the things above. Begin to ask that the Holy Spirit will help you set your affection on the things above. Set your, eh, your affection on the things above. That the things that I want to be, will be kingdom things, will be godly things, will be godly things, will be godly things, will be godly things. Will be godly things. That indeed there will be a separation between us and the people of the world. There will be a separation, there will be a distinct separation. That in the, in the, in the scheme, in the marketing scheme of heaven, it will be said concerning Moriah, it will be said concerning Aloua. It will be said concerning Alouatou Feramin, it will be said concerning Abigail, it will be said concerning Tonya, concerning Tidima, concerning Tumilei, concerning Dami. Concerning Omotisinoala, it will be said concerning us, that these ones, they have found delight in the law of the Lord. And every time that we check the meditations of their hearts, it is the law of the Lord, it is the way of the Lord, it is the will of the Lord. It is the will of the Lord, that every time that heaven checks the meditation, we will be constantly ponder on, it will be the things of the Lord. It will be the things that bring delight to the Lord, in the name of Jesus, the things that bring pleasure to the Lord, seeing souls saved. Seeing people rise again and calling upon the name of the Lord, that will be, be the things that bring delight to our hearts, in the name of Jesus. Oh, lovely, thank you. Lovely, thank you. Lovely, thank you. Lovely, thank you. If you, um, feel led to just help us round up. And I say closing prayer, could you please come up to me and do that? Do you know if you can hear me? Can we hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, who wants to close the meeting for us?
Okay, um, Jesus.
Amen.
Father, we thank you for the grace you've given us to hear your word. Thank you for your gracious giving us to study. We ask that even as we listen to these words today, that you help us work in the light of what we've understood today in the name of Jesus. Help us pattern our lives after your purposes, help us pattern our lives after your word. Help us pattern our lives after your commandments. And we ask that even as we continue this study next week, the result or the effect of. These lessons we've learned today shall be evident in our lives in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
I will commit our nice prayers at the end. We ask that we sleep and wake up early, just in my luck.
Amen, amen. I mean, thank you, Dami. So, um, tomorrow is Friday, tomorrow we go again, so, I mean, it starts on Fridays, so yeah, tomorrow. Tomorrow we go again, um, seven P M. Please don't come late, come early, you know. Build a culture around meeting, as in, let, you know how in the, I don't know, I don't know if we all grew up like that. But how we used to rush to some of the school with bibles and journals and, and pen, just to write, even if we don't understand what we are writing. You know, just to go and sit and care and write and recite memory verses. Let's, let's retain that culture, um, of coming to sit. Mania, you're coming to sit at the feet of Jesus, and he's just in our midst, and as he's. Um, breathing his word in our hearts, you know, we are hearing, we are listening, we are writing, or taking down notes. Um, so tomorrow we go again, seven P M. Please do not come late, um, invite somebody. And then come and, you know, learn how to pattern, pattern their lives, I, I mean that, um. Yeah, so invite someone, don't come late, come early, the things that you have heard tonight. Go and, go and meditate on them, you know, go and meditate on them. You have the tools. You can, you can read the rest of the verse actually, using the, the tools, seeing how we've done it today. Um, so that when, when we come tomorrow, because we, I also need us to come with questions, come with, um. Um, revelations, quotes and quotes, you know, things that the Lord revealed to you while you were reading that. Hopefully you have the time to do that tomorrow, but, you know, I want us to also go home. Go home, go back into our beds, to our devotion time and just, you know, ask that the Holy Spirit expand that chapter in our hearts. I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow. Have a restful evening. God bless you. God bless you, God bless you. Good night.
Good night.